Back on the record, having received legal advice from our acting chief counsel, Director Pinkham. The floor is yours, kind sir.
I wish to withdraw my amendment.
The second tier of the amendment?
I support that withdrawal as well.
Okay. Having had comments, concerns, and questions answered, roll call please on the main motion. Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Petu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
A big aye.
Director Harris? Absolutely yes, and it's high darn time.
This motion has passed unanimously.
I didn't want to get emotional, but this is so huge, and you see the importance of it, and I really just, I really want to thank you, Director Burke and Dr. Kenosha Da for spending time and coming to our meetings and getting to understand since time immemorial and to understand how important this is, and giving up a lot of your nights to sit in our PAC meetings, and all of you receiving our emails, I say ours, but the PAC's emails, on the importance of this, and it was the right thing. Kleko, kleko.
Thank you very much, all. Number two. Approval of the 2019-20 superintendent evaluation document. This came before Executive Committee, May 22nd, for approval. Approval of this item would accept the 2019-20 superintendent evaluation documents as attached to the Board Action Report. Motion, please.
I move that the school board approve the 2019-20 superintendent evaluation documents as attached to the Board Action Report.
Comments, questions, concerns on this Board Action Resolution? Sing none. Roll call, please.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Petu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Number three. Approval of the 2019-20 and 2020-21 performance evaluation compensation criteria for the superintendent. This came before the Executive Committee, May 22nd, for approval. Approval of this item would accept the superintendent's performance evaluation compensation criteria for 2019-20 and 2021 school years as attached to the Board Action Report as Exhibit A. Motion, please.
I move the school board approve the superintendent's performance evaluation compensation criteria for the 2019-20 and 2020-21 school years as attached to the Board Action Report as Exhibit A.
Second.
Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Director Pinkham. You were reaching for the mic. Usually, I can't see you from my bad eye. Director Burke, please.
I just want to say how excited I am about the work done here to align this to our strategic plan, and the focus on, you know, our African-American males, third grade, reading, and I just want to express an aspirational goal that we go big with this, and we go big with the growth, and that we celebrate it when we do, because I know we've got a rock star for superintendent, and I know we've got rock stars in our classrooms, and we've got rock stars as administrators. So, that's my ask, is go big. Like that.
And more voices heard from Director Mack.
To that point, I want to clarify what big means, because in here it says 5 percent, but I think it actually means five percentage points, because the example they give is 32 percent to 37. So, that would not be 5 percent growth, that would actually be a larger, I don't want to do the math on it right now, but, so it's five percentage points in growth, is the expectation.
Right. I guess my understanding is that that is in the document, and that that represent a floor for our expectations, not a ceiling.
Okay, last, excuse me, please. Director Geary?
So, will the second year be from the base year or from now? In terms of the growth? So, if the growth is greater, if it's 7 percent growth, then is it the additional growth on, or is it a total of?
Good question. I think it would be 5 percent first year, second year would be, start a new measurement to the next three.
So, it'd be a new measurement?
Yes.
So, it'd be additional?
Yes.
So, if we can exceed?
Yes.
Then it would be a B. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. When we signed and negotiated our contract with our superintendent, we did something a little out of the box for school superintendents, and she agreed to stake her paycheck and her future on metrics. And I appreciate that, because a whole lot of school districts throughout this country don't have the intestinal fortitude, I'm looking for a good polite word here, to have, to do performance pay, to address bonuses, and to me, that's really important, that we're willing to stand behind, again, money talks. Director Pinkham, please.
Just for clarification on Exhibit A, for, you know, yes, we are focused on African-American males, thus we're looking for increase of 5 percent, but the second bullet point says percentage of all students for first educational justice will increase by 3 percent. Is that going to lump all the students together, and then as a whole, those other under-service students have to increase by 3 percent? Or are you going to look at them individually? Here's Native Americans, here's Hispanic Latinx. So, then, you know, because then I'm afraid that, yeah, would if one group drops and the other group makes up?
Right. I think it's supposed to be African-American males for each year.
But then, second, the percentage of...
Yeah, I know what it says, but I think the way it's written, it means that the 3 percent would come the following year.
So, I'm reading the second.
All students?
Exhibit A, it says, number two...
Okay, it is, yes, it is the way it's written. 3 percent.
So, it could be the possibility that someone, one subgroup of the...
That is correct.
Could be declining.
Yep.
And she's willing to stake her future on it.
I mean, that's the idea of targeted universalism, right?
And targeted universalism spreads to other folks. This is, frankly, the basis of our next five-year strategic plan, and I'm willing to make a $100 bet with whomever will take me, that we're going to exceed that, we're going to far exceed that, because for the first time in my...
I'll take you.
Okay. Game on. On the record.
Oh, gosh. I'm not meaning to do that. I was just saying, I think you're going to be, I think you're going to be right, I want to pull with you.
I heard acceptance and consideration, that's a contract, pal.
What was the consideration? I didn't hear any consideration.
In any event, for the first time in the many years that I have been involved and/or watching and/or involved with this district, instead of just talking about metrics, we're putting real consequences on it, and I don't think anybody here more than Superintendent Juno and her leadership team take that any more seriously than anyone else, and I, again, am proud of us, the collective us, that we are taking this step, and to other school districts throughout the nation, we double dog dare you to follow our lead. Roll call, please.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Petu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Abstain.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed with a vote of 6 to 0 to 1.
Number four. Approval of the 2019-2024 collective bargaining agreement between Seattle Public Schools and the Principals Association of Seattle Schools, also known as PAS. This came before the Executive Committee, June 11th, for approval. Approval of this item would accept the 2019-24 collective bargaining agreement between Seattle Public Schools and the Principal Association of Seattle Schools, and authorize the superintendent, on behalf of the Board, to execute the agreement in the form attached to the School Board Action Report with any minor changes, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent, and to take any necessary actions to implement the terms of this agreement. Immediate approval is in the best interest of the district. This is an introduction and action item. Dr. Clover-Cod, Chief of Human Resources, please speak to this.
Yes, thank you.
Ah, motion, please.
I move that the school...
We're collaborative up here.
I move that the school board approve the 2019 through 2024 collective bargaining agreement between Seattle Public Schools and the Principals Association of Seattle Schools, and authorize the superintendent, on behalf of the Board, to execute the agreement in the form attached to the School Board Action Report with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent, and to take any necessary actions to implement the terms of the agreement. Immediate approval is in the best interest of the district.
Second.
Dr. Cod, please take it away.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I'll try to be brief. So, as you know, this CBA, should it be approved tonight, would be in effect starting July 1, 2019, and is for five years, and will go all the way through June 30th of 2024, so we're really proud about that. We entered into an interest-based bargaining process early spring, and then PAS voted to ratify the tentative agreement on June 11th, 2019. The primary goals for our bargain were to ensure we remain competitive as we recruit and retain school leaders. We embedded racial equity into our discussions, as we have a shared interest in recruiting, hiring, and retaining educators of color, and our commitment to workforce equity. In summary, the agreement includes the following changes. It's a five-year contract, there's professional development support for each PAS member of $500 per year, with the first three years of that being loaded, front-loaded. We did clarify guidelines for leaves and timelines for returning to work. The salary increase includes, in the 1920 school year, 5.4 percent for all members, that is inclusive of the legislative inflationary increase. In 2021, PAS will receive the legislative inflationary increase, estimated to be about a 2.1 percent. In the 21-22 school year, we will conduct a salary survey to ensure that we're still competitive and are committed to the midpoint between the third and fourth-ranked comparable districts. In 22-23, we would provide the legislative increase, and then in 23-24, we would again conduct a salary survey to ensure that we do not fall below the midpoint of the third and fourth-ranked comparable districts. So, that'll open up for questions.
Comments, questions, concerns? Director DeWolff, please.
Thank you, President Harris. Thanks for all your work on this. So, I just have a couple of questions. My first one is particularly, you know, I want to be really mindful, we've had a very emotional year at one of our middle schools, and I want to be just thoughtful about using this moment to just ask about how this contract does allow for whether it's professional development plans, or kind of a performance improvement plans, just to make really mindful that sometimes the process feels really slow, and it makes families and students feel unheard, and so what is our kind of grievance process, particularly as it pertains to school leadership?
So, I think it's important for the public to know that even though our principals are considered management, they are under, they are covered by the rights of a collective bargaining agreement, and we take due process seriously. We want to make sure it's fair and transparent and equitable across all members. In particular, for performance, it's really determined by state law. RCW outlines for certificated staff what the performance improvement would need to look like for any PAS member, and so I know sometimes that is, it's hard for the public because they want answers, and these are personnel matters that are kept confidential, and so I know that can be tricky sometimes.
Understood, and certainly don't want to get in the middle of due process, and really respect the good faith negotiations that you do on behalf of the district. For professional development, do we prescribe the topics that the school leadership needs to take each year?
No, this is, this is individual professional development, it does need to be aligned to the strategic plan, it does need to be approved by their executive director or their directors of schools, but it's for them to be able to attend perhaps conferences across the state, or even perhaps bring somebody in, they can pool their money and bring somebody in to help do some professional development across levels, so it's pretty flexible.
And it's professional development specifically for an individual principal, not their school?
Yes.
And then, okay, so what are some of the topics that that might be? I mean, is there any requirement, particularly around racial equity or implicit bias, as part of those professional development topics, as one thing we want to make sure they get to, or is it just kind of, it's in a grab bag?
We did not require that as part of the individual professional development dollars. We actually do build that into all of our leadership learning days that are once a month. It's also built into the principal learning networks, where they come together as a few principals, so racial equity and implicit bias is addressed in the sort of, I would say, group professional development. This is really intended to be differentiated, so that as an individual learner, I as a principal can choose the professional development opportunities that I think are going to help me grow in my profession, and that would be different for the individuals, and so we did not mandate. But again, there's approval process, it needs to be aligned to the strategic plan, it needs to be able to add, you know, be value-added to them as an individual and the district.
My last question is, what is the traditional timeline, particularly when it comes to some of the grievance process and due process? What's, is there a traditional, like, it takes 60 days, it takes 180 days, is there an average, or?
Every case is unique.
Sure.
It depends on if there are investigations, it depends on if it's about performance versus misconduct. Performance is usually a year-long process, at a minimum, for certificated staff members. Misconduct, depending on the nature of the misconduct, could be sooner than that, but when it comes to performance, it's typically a full-year process.
Cool, and thank you for taking my questions. I, like I said, I was able to talk to some families today, and I just want to make sure that I was able to ask some questions for them, so thank you.
Director Geary, then Director Burke?
I don't think this is really built in, but I, I'm going to take also the opportunity to at least raise the point. What discussion amongst principals is there around succession planning? Because it seems to me that it is the turnover of long-term principals, and then bringing newer principals in, that we see a sort of pattern of difficulty and cultural shifting for any number of reasons. And so, it seems to me they are the professionals that have the most experience around the issue, and many of them have come up through the ranks, having had to live through that difficulty. And I was wondering if we are spending any time trying to use their collective wisdom to smooth that transition process out. It feels to me as though every building does that in isolation, in terms of how a new principal is selected, but I'm not sure that that is using our history and our collective knowledge to its most beneficial.
So, certainly, that, all of that is outside a collective bargaining agreement, but I would want to talk to Mike Storowski, who oversees the directors of schools, who oversee all the school principals. I know they have discussions and they're thinking about it, I don't know what that process is, but it is something we need to attend to.
Burke?
This is also just one of the, sort of building on what Director DeWolff had inquired about, we had some conversations around this when this came to committee, and I just wanted to be clear for the Board and the public, that essentially the scope of this CBA, and how that relates to principal duties, scope of, you know, essentially their job description, not being encoded in the CBA, and I was wondering if you could speak to that just a little bit.
So, I'll try. So, principals and assistant principals are evaluated on a performance framework that's statewide, it's called the AWSP framework, there are eight evaluative criteria. Associated Washington School Principals Association, I used to be one, I should know that. And when it comes to misconduct, due process, there is some due process, and there are some things that are written into the CBA, but in general, the topics that we bargain with principals is much more limited in scope than, say, other unions that we bargain with. Really, we're here to talk about compensation, so we didn't dig into a lot of other issues.
Compensation and competitiveness.
Well, when, when we say compensation, our interests are that we remain competitive, but the actual options and topics that we're bargaining is around compensation. That's the bulk of where the negotiation lies.
And to those folks that we've heard from that say somehow that the Board might be shirking its fiduciary duty by introing an action, this at the same time, can you explain a little bit about how the process works, and how the staff lays the groundwork for this, advises the Board, but that the Board does not sit at the bargaining table?
Sure.
I think it's a very important distinction.
So, this is for the public. In general, we sit down with the school board before we go into negotiations, and we talk about guidelines and parameters and our interests for the negotiations. We sort of get our, you know, teams together, we go off, we negotiate with the union. We give usually monthly updates, and as it gets closer and closer, maybe more frequent updates on what's happening at the bargaining table, those happen in closed sessions. We then brought this to the Executive Committee meeting, that was a public meeting, where we talked about what this contract is, so it goes to committee, and then it comes here for you all to vote on. I can't really speak to why intro an action, I mean, I just, I do think it's in the best interest for us. The Board does not negotiate the contract, you're, you know, you're looking at the overall cost of the contract, and can we, you know, afford it, which of course, we turn to Joel Lindberghy to make sure that we, we are within our means. So, I mean, I hope that answers your question, I'm...
Helps. Thank you very much. Okay. Director Pinkham?
I just caught a possible error, hopefully scripbers there. In the motion, or let me see, in the purpose...
In the bar?
In the bar, yeah. In the purpose, it notes past, we have voted on the CBA ratification, June 12th, 2019, but then down in the background information, it says June 11th, 2019.
Well, they actually did a rolling vote.
So, it started on the 11th, then ended on the 12th?
So, I didn't really want to make it that complicated, but they did not go to a union hall, per se, and all take the vote in person, they did a rolling vote, it was electronic, so some people voted on the 11th, some people voted on the 12th. My understanding is it passed on the 11th, so it, you learn something every day.
Acting Chief Counsel, are we good with this as written or no?
So, in one space, we're saying they ratified it on June 11th, and then, I'm not sure where it says, June 12th. Director Pinkham?
Under purpose.
I just see June, June 11th. I don't... So, I don't know if I have the version...
So, again, I'm looking at the online version, so maybe it's changed since then?
Have we created enough of a record, Mr. Acting Chief Counsel?
Yes, and I think what we'll do is tomorrow, we'll check what is posted online, and if it needs to be updated, it will be updated tomorrow.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Petu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. We are at D, introduction items, and we have 14 of them, and we have a time check of 8:40, and recall that we also have an executive in closed session after this. D1, Board Policy Number 3143, District Notification of Juvenile Offenders. This came before OPS, June 6th, for consideration. Approval of this item would make edits to the Board Policy Number 3143, because a recent statewide audit found that school leaders needed clearer guidance on this issue. The updated policy is a reflection of change suggested by Washington State School Directors Association, acronym FAWL. The updated policy is a reflection of those changes. To provide more clarity, Mr. Acting Chief Counsel, Ronald Boye, floor is yours.
Yes, so the purpose provides a great summary of what happened here. The Washington State Auditor's Office conducted an audit as far as school leaders' understanding of their requirements when they receive notification that they are going to have a sex or violent offender attending school in their building. The audit did not involve Seattle Public Schools, it was, involved a number of responses from school principals across the state. However, the audit found a resounding information that, that principals did not have a clear understanding in general of what the requirements were. That caused WASDA to look at their model policy, which our model policy is based on, and they saw that they could help the issue by providing a rewrite to the policy, which is, makes the expectations on principals much more clear, and will hopefully help to solve in part the issue as far as principal understanding of their responsibilities in regard to sex offenders and violent offenders in their schools. When we reviewed the WASDA policy, we agreed that it did provide clarity, which is helpful. So, we adapted the WASDA model with a little Seattle school-specific information, namely, adding in our Office of Safety and Security as one of the entities that's kept in the loop of this information, but other than that, we kept the model policy, and we feel it is a helpful addition to our policy to just make sure the principals easily can understand what they need to do when faced in a situation like this.
Director Mack?
Thank you very much, Mr. Boye, for all of your work on this, and also, I want to highlight that the way that the process for conversation in OPS Committee, that this came to us, was a little different than it's been in the past, and I'm hoping we can continue that same sort of process around policy conversation, because instead of having a fully baked policy come to us in committee, Mr. Boye brought the conversation of, here's a WASDA model policy that is being suggested to us, here's our policy, we're thinking these things, staff is thinking these things, what does the committee members think around the concept of rewriting this policy, what's your inputs? We had a very nice and robust conversation on the front end, before the drafting started, for clarity of where we wanted to go, and then when it came back, we had a very, you know, good conversation around specifically the language and how it played out, and, and there was one section that had accidentally got missed, and we caught that working together. So, I just want to highlight that I really appreciated the process of policy development work with staff on this, because I feel like the, we were on the front end and having a really good conversation, and it didn't, it just, it went really, really smoothly, and I just want to appreciate that, and I hope that other committees may want to also adopt that same kind of process, because it was really effective for us.
Director Geary? Director Geary?
Thank you for this work. I noticed that it says that, so once the information is disseminated, it may not be further disseminated, except as by statute, and on and on. We had an incident a few years back that involved a student being transferred between schools without a clear transference of information of this nature.
Yes.
Is there another policy that requires the dissemination of information? Is that a dissemination that is allowed under this law or under these other laws? Or is this the place that that should be? Because we ended up with a pretty big problem related to that failure to disseminate. Do you have any, was that considered in this? Where do we go to understand how that would be handled? Or is that not handled pursuant to policy at all? And if it isn't, is this a time we should talk about that?
I think that is a good question. And, you know, the, it is, the information should continue to be shared so long as the student is attending our schools and moves up in grade level to other schools. And this policy does not cover that information. And I believe that could be an outlet that we further define in a superdumb procedure. Or we could think about adding additional language right now. And when I come, when we come back for action in two weeks on July 10th, we could address it with an additional paragraph. I feel like that could be easily resolved.
I think that, I don't want to add language right now that may be in violation of these other laws.
Yeah.
Or if there's something else out there, could you please look deeply into that? Do you know what I'm referring to?
Yeah, I do know what you're referring to.
And I don't want to live the past again, other than to learn from our mistakes.
Yeah.
So could you please do a deep dive into this, thinking about that scenario and be able to report back to us as a board on how we as a board can make sure that we filled that hole? If, that would be my hope, and if my board members agree.
I agree. And I will look into it further. And I do think that there is a good chance they could come back with a policy with a red line edit that may just add a sentence or two. But I'll look into it first and then we'll...
I have a question on this theme, if you will, and I really appreciate it coming up very much, though. I know of at least one incident where a student was transferring from a private school into our school system where the information was not given to our district and is there... Is there a way to bind a preceding school, whether private or private charter or other public school, is required to give us that information as part of the transcript and transfer process?
Under the Transmittal of Student Records Law, schools that a student transfers from, whether they're private or public, are required to provide a cum file to us so that a student can start school and we can place them appropriately. That information should have been in that student's file.
Okay. Thank you so much. Director Pinkham?
Thinking about Robert Eaglestaff and Cascadia, those are two different schools. And Robert Eaglestaff and Lipton Springs are two different schools. What if the students at Robert Eaglestaff and the victims at Lipton Springs, how would we handle that? Or if it's at Cascadia? Because aren't those different schools, but they're in so close proximity?
That is a good question. And I would say that additionally is, would be room for...
No vacation for you for two weeks?
And I think that it would be, it would honestly be the fact where we have schools co-situated in a building. I would have difficulty probably justifying an overall area, but within the same building, which we, I think, have an unusual number of those, unlike other districts. I think that it is a good, good point.
Director Geary?
That one seems like it could be neither shall the student be assigned to a classroom or building where another student was...
Yeah.
I mean, the insertion of the word "building" would cover beyond school.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on. Number two, BTA 4, Resolution 2018-19-27, Final Acceptance of Contract K5075 with Lincoln Construction for the Rox Hill Elementary at EC Hughes School Modernization Project. Ops June 6 for approval. Approval of this item would give final acceptance of Contract K5075 with Lincoln Construction for the Rox Hill Elementary at EC Hughes School Project. Board approval allows the district to submit required documents to the State of Washington, Department of Labor and Industries, Department of Revenue, and Employment Security and close out the project, including authorize, authorizing the release of project retainage. Take it away, COO Podesta.
So this is the beginning of the end of the administrative process to close out a project, a public works project. The work was completed last summer. This was kind of a modernization of the building, changed out the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, lighting, a few structural and architectural changes. The work was completed on time and to our satisfaction.
And quite beautifully so.
And the building's in use. And it's time to move on.
Okay, number three, Approval of the Capacity Enrollment and Facilities Master Planning. CEA FMP Advisory Committee. This came before Ops June 6 for... Approval of this item would approve the formation and charter of the Capacity Enrollment and Facility Master Planning. And what does the acronym sound like? You guys are killing me. Advisory Committee as attached to the Board Action Report. Director Mack, would you like to address this one? Because I believe this has your fingerprints all over it.
Yes, Director DeWolff and myself are sponsoring this, but this has been discussed and promoted for many, many, many months. No, years, I think.
Indeed.
Last summer, we had, if you'll remember, we spun up a task force around facilities master planning related to BECS so that we could have a more robust community engagement. And that was a really successful experience and supported our equity analysis really helpfully and supported us in our decision-making around BECS. The district doesn't have an advisory committee on the planning side of the facilities and capacity. We have the BECS BTA Oversight Committee that supports with the building side of things and kind of watching budgets as they move forward. But all of the things around boundaries and student assignments and the complexities around those, we've had a number of different task forces and committees spun up over time to support that work. But having an ongoing advisory committee would be really helpful to, I think, the district and the board to help inform our decisions. So that's the purpose of this. The advisory committee is to support robust analysis and community engagement in the district's planning processes for school capacity enrollment and facilities and to make recommendations to the school board on these matters. And we talked about this a lot. We talked about it in committee, both Ms. Podesta and Ms. DeBacker. We had a number of meetings around the charter specifically and whether or not it works with the structure. And they were incredibly supportive of moving this forward for consideration to you all. So I'm super excited that here we are.
Can you answer why for consideration as opposed to approval?
Because when we, actually, I didn't, I wasn't sure if it was going to be ready at the last Ops Committee meeting. And I had the charter drafted in with all the comments and so forth, but I didn't have the bar written yet. So the actual explanation of everything for the bar hadn't been written. So we said consideration since the bar hadn't been written. And then I want to give a shout out thanks to staff to supporting drafting the bar contract. So that's why.
COO Podesta, did you have any comments or CAO DeBacker? Y'all are the ones that are going to help do the heavy lifting here.
You know, we found our previous task force to be quite useful and institutionalizing. That work makes sense because we're always planning for capacity.
Yeah, and I, you know, I think just from a staffing standpoint, any help that we can get from community members as we look at the student assignment and transition plan is greatly appreciated. So more voices at the table, we support that.
Any questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues at this time? Keep, no, you may not vote on it now. This is an intro item. Director Burke, and keep in mind the time. It's 8:55. And we are now on item number three.
Keeping in mind the time. I guess I'm not looking necessarily for answers to this, but this is, this is great. Thank you so much, because I think it is something we've talked about. And so I have four things. The first one is that the membership is identified as three years. And so that's something to be thoughtful about if it's, you know, if that deters people from applying or if that's something that provides stability, because I can see both of those. And I...
We, the debate between like two is too short, four might be too long. So we kind of split the baby.
The other one is, I'm thinking about the, how great the BECS Oversight Committee as a standard committee, it's one of our success stories for stability and information and, you know, universal value. They self-manage their charter. Essentially, they, you know, in the meetings, they've had conversations about, oh, do we need to adjust this and basically bring recommendations back? I'm not exactly sure what the process for that was. But there's nothing in here that says that the task force will, or the committee, the advisory committee will have a way of modifying or owning or adapting their charter. So that's just something to think about. Doesn't necessarily fit in here, but I just want to...
Isn't that delegation of the board authority?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that they do.
Well, it would have to come back to the board for approval, but that's the...
Okay, didn't hear that part.
I think that was the process, thank you for clarifying. I think that was the process that the, you know, three, five, 10 years down the road, will this language still apply? And we don't have the foresight to know exactly, but by empowering the committee to adjust and report back, that was, that was one of them. The third one, I guess there are only three, is under Article Four Responsibilities, one of the responsibilities talks about adding to or renovating buildings. And I'm just curious if that scope should be adding to or renovating buildings for capacity reasons versus other things around age or condition or something like that, just to keep it from becoming all things for all people. And again, you don't have to answer that as well, but I just, those are the things that I flagged. And I think it's a great document and I'm excited to support it.
Director Geary?
I guess my concern, thinking about when we're talking about boundaries and adjusting schools, these are such personal decisions. And so input from a board, from a group like this around them could both be, I guess, getting the reliability is what I'm a little worried about in terms of the public view, because we certainly can't have somebody from every school or every boundary on both sides of any boundary issue participating. And yet, if somebody on one side of a boundary issue is participating and it kind of comes out in a way that appears to be in favor. So unlike the BECS Oversight where it's very clear that the people who participate are either employees of or do not have any type of conflict involved because they can't take our contracts, how will this particular task force work through that? Or what, what guardrails do we have for it? And then it's my understanding that over time, the FAC Mac, which existed in the past, ended up coming sort of apart and people started dropping out, maybe perhaps because of those kinds of conflicts. So I'm just curious what discussion and what has been built in.
Yeah, we did have conversation around that. The thing about a task force is that it's short-term, and this one's an advisory committee. So a task force you're appointing and what we did in the past for the high school boundaries was around a very specific topic. So then you, in that kind of engagement, you have the opportunity for people to come in with a preconceived idea. And they're already focused on X thing for that specific thing in a task force. The, I think the benefit for this being advisory committee is that when the selection process is happening, it's, it's a long-term commitment to the whole district. And we're, you know, intentionally going to be looking at balanced representation across the district and folks that are interested in not just their own specific school, but the district as a whole. And by focusing it that way, it helps to reduce the, you know, you're not just talking about a specific, two schools and their boundaries. This is, this is ongoing advisory committee for the entire district's capacity and management.
I appreciate that. So does this then work better? Or should there be a component of this, sort of like, going back to, not meaning to traumatize anybody, should this function as sort of an instructional materials committee then that would be in charge of creating or influencing the creation of more specific, smaller groups to address, do deep dives into particular questions? And has, is that at all part of this?
We also did talk about that, that there may need to be subcommittees spun up. And I don't think the charter disallows that. We actually kind of, we talked about and wrote it broadly enough that the exact nature of the work needs to be aligned with the board's decision-making. So if we know that, you know, we're coming up to decision-making around X boundaries, then maybe there is a subcommittee that needs to come up. I do want to also note that I consulted with North Shore, who, and there's a number of other districts around us that have successfully had committees of this sort ongoing for quite a while. And North Shore in particular was raving about their success in having confidence in the solutions that came forward out of these processes when they got to the board, that you actually had a really robust process and folks to turn to and that those conversations were had and that they weren't, they weren't biased from the start because there were people that had been, you know, committed for as long as they'd been committed.
If subcommittees are something that is a potential and not excluded, then given the bullet point lists of responsibilities, when you bullet point things out so finely and you don't include a bullet point, then you are somewhat excluding it. So if that is a potential responsibility that we could foresee, we may want to include that in that list of responsibilities, would be my suggestion.
I'd be happy to find a way to add of, you know, the specification that subcommittees or whatever could be formed. Yeah, thank you.
Director Pinkham, did you wish to speak to this?
Yes, just looking at the qualifications, I guess I'm kind of stuck on the word technical. Because the technical nature, there you, there's a needed previous engagement and related committees and/or, and there's extra in there, expertise in urban capacity enrollment and/or facilities plan or desired qualifications. I also, in being, working in the College of Engineering, yes, technical can be a lot of things, but we also need the social expertise. So I just hope that we're looking at the technical nature that we end up not just getting a bunch of engineers at the table, but also make it a good, nice, good representation.
So then we would be talking about things like separating families and communities that are contiguous, et cetera, to talk about the ramifications of that. Is that where you're going?
Yeah, the, so the social aspects. If we just do a technical, the line goes here because there's this number over here and this number over there, and that's the obvious place to draw. Whereas, oh, but wait, what families are impacting within that nature, those kind of boundaries?
Terrific. Moving on. Excuse me. Revised Board Policy Number 4130, Title I, Parent and Family Engagement. This came before Exec, June 12th, for approval. Approval of this item would amend and retitle Board Policy Number 4130, Title I, Parent and Family Engagement, as attached to the Board Action Report. Take it away, Chief Scarlett.
Good evening.
Doctor Scarlett.
This update puts us in compliance with Federal Statute 20, it's a long code, 6318, that governs family engagement. Every district must have a general policy and attendant superintendent procedures, which we have Procedure Number 4129 for the policy, and then 4129 superintendent procedures. The SP guidelines from the task force that we had made the family engagement sustainable. So this update is aligned with the WASDA, WSSDA, I hope you know what that means, that acronym, recommendations that districts fold the procedures into the policy. And so the major change for this is the folding of the procedures of 4129 SP into the actual policy.
Thank you. And I believe in committee, we talked about enhancing the community engagement portion of this bar. And I see Anita back there nodding her head. Can you introduce your colleague, please?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. Anita Koyier-Moamba, she is our Family Engagement and Partnership Manager, who has really led this work. Thank you, Anita.
Thank you. And Board Directors receive redline copies for clarity of our enhanced explanation of the community engagement that was done. Director Mack?
I was looking at this, and, and it makes total sense to me, based on the law and needing to get updated. But I just wanted to kind of publicly point out that I think it is actually really, really odd that we have a specific policy related just to Title I, family engagement. That is a thing that I, just from a legislative standpoint, that to me feels really awkward.
Welcome to education reform world.
Right? So I just, the fact that that is, like, we're in compliance, but it, to me, feels really not good. But we do have, in the policy right above it is 4129, which is family engagement or family. So we, we have a policy around the whole district around family engagement that isn't Title I, but I just, I just wanted to publicly state that I just think it's a little odd.
Director Burke?
So recognizing that this is essentially the, there's a lot of changes in the policy, the majority of that is integrating procedure into policy, makes it look like all of a sudden there's a lot more work. My question relates to fiscal impact. We're als, it, as it looks, it also looks like we're trying to raise the quality or the kind of sustainability of that engagement. And my feeling is that needs a greater investment, but I don't see a fiscal impact. Is this something that needs greater investment to deliver, or can we do it with what we've got?
You've got Joel Enns' attention.
So obviously, we always need greater investments. How we determine who gets what in terms of Title I funds is based on the district, and Michael Stone does a lot of that work. He leads that work. So at this point, we look at about 35% for elementary schools, for free and reduced lunch. Then at the middle school level, we're looking at about 65%, and at the high school level, about 75% to make a determination. The reality is, every child needs a significant investment in terms of family engagement, that if their parents know better how to support their learning, they will be able to support them better. And that requires resources, but it also requires incredible creativity. And there are many people who do great things at home with very little resource to support kids. What does that look like? And I think, Director Mack, one of the things you raised was this question of, why do we really have to have a Title I separate from the general policy? I think that creates some really interesting concepts and ideas about families, and we develop stereotypes. But that's what our department is combating right now, is that every student needs certain things, and how can we reflect on that? How can we create like a tier-one support system for every school to know how to engage their families, how to measure the results of that engagement? That's basically where we're at.
Director Gary?
I haven't crosswalked it, but it seems in reading it that this almost seems like the next step up of what Head Start does. And so I haven't crosswalked the language, but I do wonder if the requirements for Head Start and for the Title I have significant crossover, and that in terms of what we are doing as a district, in implementing this family support and outreach for families, kids in poverty, is similar. I'm hoping that there's some coordination and some discussion, so that it is a seamless system, as opposed to the parents deal with a Head Start system, and then they transition to something that is different, and, because it, it might be easier for us administratively if we're creating something that's carrying our families through. I don't know if that work has been done, or that discussion has happened at all?
Not really, but you're right, a lot of it is heavily based on what works successfully for Head Start programs and early learning. But the reality is, we want to step away from the idea of programs for children in poverty, or experiencing poverty, into programs that support all students, because we know there are issues in non-Title schools, and children-
Is that targeted universalism?
Yes, ma'am. That, that works, and, but we really have to think about particular systems that allow everybody to access, you know, a family engagement that's linked to learning.
Perhaps you misunderstand me. I'm not saying, I, I'm, I'm only looking at the idea that we may already have some of this work happening someplace else, and that meets this letter of the law. And of course, if it's a good system, it's a good system. And I'm not saying Head Start one way. I'm saying it should be a flow-through to get the best continuum for our families and kids.
Best for them. There's, there's a lot to do before we even get these young men and women on the job, and it takes a lot of work, so-
Okay, I'm gonna push back a little bit on you.
That's good.
You said Community Workforce Agreement.
Yes.
We have re-titled this, have we not, sir?
Yes, that's right. I didn't know there'd be a test. Student Committee Work, Student Community Workforce Agreement, yes. And I love it. That's great. I mean, name it and own it, and that's what we do here, so-
We're successful.
Right? And I would say we've got a lot of resources to put towards this, a lot of good minds, a lot of people that already do pre-apprenticeship. I sit on a, two pre-apprenticeship boards, and we do a lot of good work here. And unfortunately, it's a supply and demand thing, right? You, we, we need an end user to ask for it, and that's what we're looking for, is an end user, and we'll provide the talent.
Okay, Director Burke, very quickly, given the time.
Very quickly. Thanks for staying and sharing, waiting it out. We've, we've had conversations already around this, and, you know, we're not adopting a, you know, a Community Workforce Agreement like taking the city's document and putting Seattle Public Schools logo on it. And I think that's what's so exciting about this work, is that we recognize there are a lot of amazing community benefits that our government partners, you know, the Port and the city, and Sound Transit, are, are reaping those benefits, and the community's reaping those benefits, and, and that's a great investment of taxpayer dollars. And this conversation that we're having centers the student and the, the understanding that our mission is, is preparing students for college career and life. And if the trades are a destination, or a midpoint, or just an experience, this collaboration will benefit all of those kids. And so I'm super excited about that. I recognize the supply and demand that we have, this is a demand-side tool. We're focusing the demand for students on our projects. But we also recognize we have a supply-side problem. We're not putting out enough students to feed apprenticeship programs and pre-apprenticeship programs. And so that's, that's the place that I'm going to keep beating the drum, is how does this conversation, how does this task force help us with our supply, promoting those things, providing those experiences for our students? These are the conversations that we all have, and all of our heads nod, and so I'm excited for more head nods.
Director Pinkham?
Just a quick note, I, I hope that we'll say SCWA, because when I try to pronounce that, I don't like the way it kind of sounds. So hopefully you can say SCWA.
Any other comments, questions, concerns at this time? Well, we have our honored guest here.
Do you have any more?
I just had one more thing to say really quick, is, obviously, I've been here all day, and you guys are doing a fantastic job, the way you, you listen, and I appreciate this late at night, your guys' attention to detail. I've, I've been to a lot of long meetings, and this is a, this is a heck of a meeting you guys are doing here, so I appreciate that.
I told you you could have the gavel.
That's something else. I, I applaud everybody here, so. But I want to let you know also, we, we talked a lot about diversity earlier. The building trades are the most diverse, right behind the military in this country. We're the most diverse group, and we have spent billions of dollars, obviously, on training here, and, and we believe in that, because that's what got us to where we, we are here today. So we're, we're in line, I believe, with, with everything that we're doing here, and, and we want to do a little more.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving on. Number, number six, Approval of Creative Advantage Arts Partnership Fund with City of Seattle Office of Arts and Culture. This came before CNI, June 11th, for approval. Approval of this item would authorize Superintendent to execute the memorandum of agreement with the City of Seattle Office of Arts and Culture for $362,500 for the Creative Advantage pathways, with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the Superintendent, and to take any necessary actions to implement the agreement. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district. CAO Debacker, take it away.
The Creative Advantage is our citywide initiative to establish equitable access to arts education for every student SPS. You saw that demonstrated tonight with the Meanie Drumline, and how they gave a shout out to Creative Advantage. It wasn't even set up that way, so it was a, it was a beautiful moment for Gail and, and all of us here. This is rooted in racial equity due to the access gap research done in 2012, that reported students' access to arts education is predicted by race, home, language, family, income, and sped status. It's a collective impact partnership with the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture, the Seattle Foundation, arts organization, and teaching artists within the area. We've had this partnership since 2013, 14, and we've received funding since 14 and 15. As you've seen in the bar on pages five and six, this takes the total of schools that have access to this to 81. And with that, I will stop and give you an opportunity to ask questions. We were also asked at the CNI meeting if we would share an impact story with you about that, so I invite Gail Sellhorse, the Visual and Performing Arts Manager, to come up to provide this.
Hi, I'm Gail Sellhorse, Visual and Performing Arts Manager, which includes the Creative Advantage. So we have a couple stories to tell you about the impact that arts partnerships are having for our students in our schools. One is from Rainier View Elementary, and the other is from Chief C Health International High School. So a few years ago, Rainier View Elementary School had no visual arts instruction and no general music instruction, and little to no arts partnerships for their students. Since the Creative Advantage, they have a full-time visual arts teacher, and this year, every student had the opportunity to experience three different residencies with artists. They were printmaking from Carina Del Rosario, pottery from Amaranta Sandus, and observational drawing and self-portrait from Isabel Marshall of Coyote Central. And so when we talked with Elaine Bagwell, who is the visual arts teacher there, she's also on the Visual and Performing Arts Culturally Responsive Teaching Cohort. We were talking with her about her experience doing art at Rainier View, and she said, it being a new program, that when she started, the students were reticent to engage in art-making, sometimes disappointed in their work, would sometimes give up. And this is a very common thing that we see happen for students when they've had no arts education, whether it's media arts, dance, music, or visual art, or theater. And so at the end of this year, she was talking with one of her fourth graders, and she asked her, you know, what was your favorite thing about visual arts this year? And she thought it was going to be something around like, you know, drawing or a painting project that they did. And this is what her students said. She said, "What I like best about art class is that I can make a mistake, and then I can fix it." And that is one of the things that Elaine tried to foster in her students, that it's okay to make a mistake and to celebrate those mistakes. And this is the kind of thing that we want all of our students to be able to take the risk and be able to do in the art room, and also in their other classrooms. And the other example we'd like to share with you is from Chief C Health. So for the last two years, the entire 10th grade Social Studies group of students, with their two teachers, Heather Griffin and Brianna Whited, they partnered up with film teaching artists from Arts Core and the Seattle International Film Festival to develop documentaries on social issues that were important to the students. And so this year's topics included gentrification, school dress codes, which we see is up next on the agenda, the bell schedule, and mental health. The students put on a film festival, every student in the school saw them. They did a community event in the evening for friends and family. And Heather Griffin, the teacher, shared this with us, that students who were not involved in the film project still bring up the films they saw at the festival three months later. So a ninth grader just yesterday brought up the film about gangs in South Park in a class conversation. And so we wanted to share this with you. It's through these kinds of arts partnerships where students are able to engage in advocacy, in what's important to them, and that even people who are watching the artwork, it's sticking with them, and it's transferring, it's relating to them, and it's showing up in other areas of their academics and in their lives. And so we value these partnerships that we're able to do with the Office of Arts and Culture, and spreading it as much as we can to the students. So thank you for listening and for the opportunity to share. Do you have questions?
Thank you for sharing. Director Gary, please.
Thank you. Thank you for the changes that I saw to the bar, around just making the expenditures sort of consistent with the contract, and then the inclusion of the number of students that are being benefited by the program. I thought one of our directors specifically would like that. And then, you know, going back to the Meanie Drumline, we had some discussion about sort of racial impact in terms of, through instrumental music. So it does make me wonder, do the kids in the drumline get counted in instrumental music? Or are they, like, in terms of the number of kids participating, how are we doing that? Again, are we making sure that our lens around the participation in music is defining music broadly enough to incorporate things more than violin?
Right.
Do you know?
Yeah, orchestral band, yeah. I, that's a really good point. I'm glad you raised that. So this particular program that you saw tonight, Big World Breaks, is an after-school program, so it's not happening in the school day. So in terms of our course offerings and the data that we're tracking for what's happening during the school day, a program like Big World Breaks would not show up in that data. But it's happening out of school time, which matters just as much.
It does. And I think we need to capture that, in terms of not sending the wrong message about who is being served and welcome and participating in our music arts offerings, the best we can, where it matters. Because some kids may need to participate in certain kinds of classes during the school day, but as long as they have the availability of the music in a different- day, but as long as they have the availability of the music in a different, I think we need to capture it all.
I see what you're saying, sure, yeah. I think it's a, I hear what you're saying, I think it's a both and. Some students are able to access it after school and we also want to ensure that those students are also able to have the opportunity to access it during the school day.
We hear often about the conflicts between physical education, language, music, art, all those things. But that, we, we just need, I just want to make sure that as we're creating, we're collecting that data, that we are being broad.
Sure.
In terms of how we're doing it. Because if kids are participating in football, they actually get a credit towards PE even though it isn't during the academic day. So let's make sure we're, we're doing a good collection of data that's expansive and honest.
Yeah, thank you.
Great work.
Director Pinkham.
Thank you for this. And as far as the schools that are selected, are we being conscious decisions that they're feeder schools, so a student leaves elementary school, the middle school will have that same kind of programs and that middle school, I go into high school versus students, oh gee, now I'm out of this school, there's no art that I just had the pleasure of being involved with and is at my next school. So is that intentional?
Yes, it is. So the Creative Advantage implementation strategy is built on a neighborhood model. So we go into pathways so that the middle and high schools and the elementary schools that are feeding up into them are all experiencing the same implementation strategy and the same inputs so that we can see that continuum continue on.
Okay, fantastic. And then I have an ask, which I hopefully, one, do we need to get a practice of Latino, Latinx? What terminology will we be using in bars or any publications? Because it says Latino in our, in the bar, so I just, just a little point that there may be some people who would prefer Latinx.
Director Burke.
I love the words collective impact partnership. I think that's a really cool thing, first of all. Second, thanks for staying and sharing the, the collective impact stories because I think we regularly hear about the, kind of the clinical elements or the budget elements or the policy elements. And so getting it to the student level and then also the student level three months later, it really does, it really does resonate. And then I wanted, last thing, I just want to really put an exclamation point on what Director Gary brought up. You know, we look at, there's just not enough time in the schedule to do all the things that, that are available or that kids would want to do or that parents would hope their kids do. And I think we're, we're, we're working really hard in a lot of our areas to be creative about, you know, cross crediting, dual crediting. And I think that putting those same lenses on, you know, media, performing arts, music, and after-school activities and collecting the data around it, I think would really help us better understand where our investments are going and where our impact is.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Number seven, approval of contract to support Open Doors Youth Reengagement Program 2019-20. This came before CNI, June 11, for.
Approval.
Approval of this item would authorize superintendent to execute the contract to Seattle Central College. After receiving the amount of $575,000 over fiscal years 2019-20, in the form of the draft agreement dated May 24, 2019, attach to the school board action report with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent and to take any necessary actions to implement the contract. The year of CNI.
Well, the purpose of this board action is to approve the scope of work agreement between Seattle Public Schools and Seattle Central Colleges in support of the Open Doors Youth Reengagement Program. We have had this program since 2016 and the purpose of this program is for youth ages 16 to 21 who have dropped out or are not expected to graduate before the age of 21. As you mentioned, the contract is for $575,000. Open Doors seeks to offer multiple pathways to students to achieve educational success through high school completion, GED attainment, work preparation and training, and college level work or work coursework. We, it was requested at the CNI meeting that we have, invite Dr. Edwards Lang to be here to, to be recognized for the work. She did acknowledge our invitation, but she was not able to attend tonight and given the time of the evening, that was probably very, very wise on her part. I think if, I will stop at that point and open it up for any questions. And you do need to know that Dr. Caleb Perkins is on the line and listening if you have any specific questions about this.
Comments, questions, concerns? Sing none. We're moving to number eight, approval of Board Policy 3224, Student Dress. This came before CNI, June 11, for. Consideration. Approval of this item would establish a uniform, universal, excuse me, universal student dress policy for all students in the district. Acting Chief Counsel Ronald Boye, take it away.
Thank you, and I am joined today by Toshi Ishi Saka. She is a VUland Elementary PTSA member, she's also a member of the Washington State PTSA, and she was active in developing Seattle Council PTSA's resolution in support of a universal dress code for the school district. So I'm going to speak briefly and then turn it over to her to share anything that she would like to about.
And thank you for doing that. I heard your presentation leading up to the SC, PTSA vote. You very graciously offered to do a side-by-side matrix.
Yes.
That's the kind of collaboration that lifts us all up. Very much appreciated.
Yes, and it was very helpful to have that partnership with Seattle Council PTSA. So I'm very excited to be here tonight. We've been working on this for a very long time. And I, just for some brief history, currently Seattle Public Schools allows each school to develop their own dress code policy. In my time with the district, I've grown concerned over that practice because we know that dress codes have a lot of history in all of our lives and a lot of people have notions of what a dress code needs to be. But when we really break it down, we really have to think about what is most important? What are we actually concerned about? And what are the things that we should not be concerning ourselves with in school and preventing barriers to student attendance and potentially creating student discipline that isn't necessary? So in the last year, last school year, students at Garfield High School became very vocal about their concerns about the dress code enforcement there. And it, through the direction of the board, gave me an opportunity to dive into this and see what we could do to develop a universal dress code policy for the district that did not unfairly target students identified as female and that we focus on, again, what is essential. And what I found in speaking with students and administrators and community members was that we need to make sure that the way a student dresses for school is primarily parent guardian and the student's responsibility. That, that's a decision that's made at home. And then once they're at school, we are concerned about the student's attire or personal items interfering with health or safety or creating a hostile intimidating environment to the school. Beyond that, we need to limit our concern. So we laid out core values to start the policy. The core values being that students should be able to dress for school in a manner that expresses their individuality without fear of unnecessary discipline or body shaming. That students should have the right to be treated equitably. Dress code enforcement will not create disparities, reinforce or increase marginalization of any group, nor will it be more strictly enforced against students because of their racial identity, ethnicity, gender identity, gender expression, gender nonconformity, sexual orientation, cultural or religious identity, household income, body size, type, or body maturity. Next value, that students and staff are responsible for managing their own personal distractions and students should not face unnecessary barriers to school attendance. So for our universal dress code, we indicate that students must wear a top, a bottom, and footwear. And the dress code indicates that the policy permits additional student attire requirements when necessary to ensure safety in certain academic settings such as physical activities, science, or CTEU courses. And it also allows reasonable variation when attire is a specific attire, attire is reasonable for participation activities such as swimming or gymnastics where maybe there would be a difference as far as the, the requirements as far as students wearing clothes. Then when we look at enforcement, we talk about how we are not using dress code enforcement as a discipline unless it violates another discipline rule in our student rights and responsibilities. We also talk about the appropriate ways to address a dress code violation in the classroom and in a school. So I'm excited about this and I'll turn it over to Toshi to speak.
So I, I got involved in this, I'm embarrassed to say, that I did not know that my child's school had a dress code. She'd never been dress coded. We'd never had any word that what she was wearing was inappropriate in any way. And then in March, she came home and she said, "Mom, my teacher said that I can't wear this." And I asked her, you know, give me a little more detail, what happened in your class? Turns out, it was a very hot day in March, I think everybody remembers, we had a heat wave back then and the kids showed up with sleeveless sundresses on and such. And my daughter's teacher thought it would be a good time to familiarize the children with the school's dress code. And my kid had come to school, she's wearing this floral pink sundress, no sleeves, shorts under the skirt. Turns out that the dress code, when I got a hold of it, at first I was surprised, I said, "Oh, you have a dress code." I went searching for it, the principal sent it to me, I reviewed it. The dress code doesn't allow, it did not allow bare, bare shoulders. And then, of course, it had the rule, the fingertip rule about shorts and the shorts my daughter was wearing under her skirt were too, you know, they were too short. And I looked at the thing and I, I thought, wow, this is remarkably gender biased, this is going to be enforced against female presenting students. And in fact, that's exactly what my daughter's teacher told her in class was, yes, this is only enforced against girls. And so I, you know, briefly thought about suing the school or the district and then I thought, well, maybe I should just approach them and see if we can fix this. So we called a meeting with my daughter's teacher, the principal, the members of the, the building leadership team. I did some research, proposed an alternative, and thankfully they, you know, they were already of the same mind, having seen the thing, the dress code. And so getting that change was not a huge effort, they were very on board. So later on, somebody from the Seattle Council PTSA had heard about this, this success with the school and they asked if I might mind drafting a, a code for them to consider. So I did that with, you know, I took a lot of source materials and filtered them through and, and came up with a code that was adopted, you know, it was reviewed by many community members. I don't want to present this as though I did this all by myself. There's been a lot of work across the country about dress code equity and ways to make these codes so that they're not discriminatory against any, any characteristics. So, so we got this dress code together, sent, we went off to the Seattle Council PTSA and that code was ultimately adopted. At which point, Leslie Harris said, "Hey, you know, this is great, but can you, our, you know, Ronald Boye and students at Garfield and the advisory committees are all working on various aspects of making this code more equitable." And we don't know how this code that the SCPTSA just, just produced lines up with any of the work that's ongoing. And so she asked if, if somebody in the room could volunteer to do a matrix analysis and I, and I did. So I, I sent that off. I sent that off to Ronald.
Yep.
And I think, and also comments on, on, on the draft, the interim draft at the time. And this is the output of that. But I'm, I'm happy to say that this draft and the draft that was adopted by my child's school, it really goes to the heart of addressing individual level discretion and that's what the problem was. Because if you're living in a culture that's imbued with bias, racism, prejudice, and then you give people individual level discretion.
Is that right?
Yes. You have, you, you have a problem. That is a problem that, that you just can't get rid of unless you decide to standardize behaviors, rules, and really make sure that there is equity built into the systems. So that's my story.
Thank you so much. Director DeWolff.
Thanks, President Harris, and thank you for all of your work on this. I'm super humbled that, this is, to, to President Harris's point, this is exactly what we hope our community will work with us on these things. So my only question, particularly in the last few years, I feel like there's been a proliferation of stories around black girls' hair and also particularly as we think of native young males and braids sometimes. Do you, do you have, how does that policy affect or not affect or what is the way which it, it would impact those two types of students?
So in my outreach with students and administrators, I actually didn't hear any concern about hair, especially from our students, that did not come up. You know, it could be something that could be added to the policy. I just don't see that it's an, that it's been an issue that I know of in the district and, and my six years of receiving phone calls about dress code violations, I've, I can't ever remember an administrator calling me and being concerned about his student's hair.
That's great. And I guess, and, and so maybe this is just something that you weighed, particularly in these conversations, is, is do you add the language to be explicit so that we're just calling out that we want to respect your, your hair? Or was, you know, what was the choice? And it, because it's, it's not necessarily laid out, so just want to make sure we won't get ourselves into a, a trap or a tricky situation.
And I think that when I, when I thought about it, as far as this policy, the initial intent was to keep the policy as concise and condensed as possible. It grew to three pages, which was not the original intent. And then it, the, the final that's presented to you today, we just, we felt that it, it was as encompassing as it needed to be for use as, within the district.
Comments, questions, concerns at this time? Director Pinkham, please.
Kind of popped in my head here, I know some schools have like pajama days, would this then like, impact that in any way? No?
Not at all. Yeah, they have top, bottom, and shoes. Good to go.
Or slippers.
Yeah, or slippers. Footwear, I guess, is the actual term that's used.
Thank you so very, very much and appreciate you sticking around for the late evening.
Yeah.
Renewal of Washington Schools Risk Management Pool Coverage for Fiscal Year 2019 to 2020. This came before ANF, June 10, for.
Consideration.
Approval of this item would authorize the superintendent to accept the proposed Washington Schools Risk Management Pool coverage agreements for the 2019-20 fiscal year and that the expenditure of $2,820,309 in premium contributions to the Washington State Risk Management Pool, loss funding pool be authorized. A compliance issue, our, our only option and a hell of a deal? Is that fair?
Yes.
Does anybody wish to address this?
I'm supposed to point out that the amount on the agenda was the old amount. We did get, we kept on negotiating, thanks to our legal team and John Cirque, as I understand it. And they did decrease the amount of the premium for next year. So I just want to say that the bar amount is correct, the amount listed on the agenda was the old amount.
That's. That's happy news. Thank you so very much. Number 10, Seattle Public Schools. SPS is applying for the 21st Century Community Learning Center Grant, CCLC, in partnership with Seattle Parks and Recreation Parks and key community-based organizations. This came before ANF June 10 for...
Approval.
Approval of this item would authorize the superintendent to accept the 21st Century Community Learning Center grant funding and enter into necessary agreement should SPS be selected as a provider. Take it away, Chief Financial Officer, Jolynn Bergy.
Thank you. So SPS has applied for the 21st Century Community Learning Grant in partnership with the City of Seattle Parks and Rec Department. The grant would be $2.5 million over five years. Should we be awarded the grant, it will provide academic and enrichment activities for up to 120 students in after-school and summer learning. Seattle Public Schools has identified Emerson Lowell, MLK Junior, and Northgate Elementary as the school sites for the grant. The grant application is still in review. Notice of award has not yet happened. So we may or may not get the...
Comments, questions, concerns? I've been getting some feedback about after-school carnivals that would be based on SBAC testing as part of this. And I thought we got rid of those practices. Any comments on that, or could we look further into this before action?
Tell me what those were again, please. I thought you said carnivals.
Yes, carnivals. After-school carnivals to up attendance and/or...
As a reward?
Up the numbers of SBAC testing. And we have had more than a few minor scandals in the past by large and in charge principals and lived to tell the tale and suffer the consequences of those kinds of actions. So if that could be looked into, I would be ever so grateful. Okay, moving on. 11, Seattle Public Schools. SPS Personal Service Contracts, PSC, for Seattle Parks and Recreation, City Year, Seattle University, Tutors of Seattle Schools, and Seneca Family Agencies. This came before ANF June 10 for...
Consideration.
Approval of this item would authorize the superintendent to execute contracts for a combined total of $3,421,180 with City of Seattle Parks and Recreation Department for $566,321, University Tutors for Seattle Schools, $647,759, Seneca Family of Agencies, $1,144,600, and City Year, $1,062,500 for School Year 2018-19 for the purpose of providing families, education, preschool, and promise, FEP, levy-funded, or other funding sources, activities in selected elementary, K-8, middle, and high schools with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent, and to take any necessary actions to implement the contracts. Why consideration and not approval? Mr. Chair.
I do not have my notes in front of me, so Jolynn, can you help remind me, refresh my...
Yes, the bar was moved forward for consideration. It was missing the Seneca part of the attachment, and so my understanding was that it would have been moved forward for approval if that had been attached.
Thank you.
For the general public, Seneca Family of Agencies delivers what kind of services?
Special ed and mental health services? Depends on the setting, yeah.
Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. Number 12, Amending Board Policy 6100. Revenues from local, state, and federal sources came before ANF June 10 for...
Consideration.
Approval of this item would amend Board Policy 6100. Revenues from local, state, and federal sources as attached to the Board Action Report. Consideration because?
Again, I didn't bring my notes out, divert Jolynn on this.
Yeah, I think consideration just because we were changing the policy, and I don't believe there was another comment about it at that point in time. It was simply a change in the policy. It was Policy 6100. There was some talk when we had the bar about McGilvray. I believe those were somewhat related. So this change is really a technical requirement. The WASDA policy has been updated, and there are two policies that we're bringing forward tonight. Both have to deal with the new legislative requirement for a levy subfund, and so WASDA updated the policies. There are two policies that were impacted by that legislative change, and we're bringing both forward tonight.
Will we also then start seeing more compliance-type policies come through to us as we catch up for what the legislature has either done for us or to us?
I think this one, I think these may cover it from audit and finance perspective, at least from finance, the finance shop. This is a legal requirement. There is a new legal requirement that school boards must pass this type of policy. So they have to include the language that we have changed regarding a public hearing within 30 days of issuance if the state auditor issues a finding that the district failed to comply with the restrictions for local enrichment levies. So that's really driving the policy change, is that new requirement in law to have that be a board policy.
So Director Mack, Director Burke.
We had a robust conversation around the fact that this policy was not being updated for any other reason than what the state law that came down with this new requirement, but that opening up the policy, you know, opens up the discussion again. And I do want to kind of publicly state here, which is actually really useful, the first line of the policy is that it is the policy of the Seattle School Board to pursue systematically those funding opportunities that are consistent with district priorities from federal, state, and other government units, as well as from private and foundation sources. So we actually have it very clearly in policy that we are going to go out and find dollars in line with our priorities, and it's supposed to be systematic. And we recognize that it's difficult to be systematic, but we know that in the recent work that we've been doing and staff has been doing around looking at the big sheet and doing some of this analysis, and I think you're calling it resource mapping, we had a really robust conversation about the fact that it's in policy. We may not be as robust yet, but that we hope that it continues that direction. So that's why it was consideration.
Thank you. Director Burke.
So one of the changes in here is to ensure that local revenues are used only for documented demonstrated enrichment of the state's statutory program of basic education as authorized in blah, 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 which they are not fully paying for. Is that, like, are we backing ourselves into something which, you know, how do we reconcile that, that the state is not paying for program of basic education?
Director Mack?
I think Director Mack wants to answer.
I would like to actually help answer that.
Coming out of her chair to answer that one.
I am, because, you know, we, being at WASDA's Legislative Committee meetings, we got presentations from folks, and this is one of the biggest topics, right? What exactly does this mean, and are we backing ourselves into the corner? And OSPI's response, and the truth is, is that basically anything they don't pay for isn't basic ed. So, I mean, that really isn't everything above and beyond what they pay for is not basic ed. So everything else is enrichment. And by the very nature of the fact that if their funding formula doesn't pay for it, then it's not basic ed. So that's OSPI's story, and that's our story, because that's the reality, that they have defined basic ed by what they provide. And it's insufficient, therefore enrichment dollars? Yes.
And I'll keep my snarky comments to myself as we move on.
Thank you.
Were you wishing to speak to this?
I'm getting ready. Ready to say something as soon as you're done.
Okay. Please do it. Director Geary.
Right. And so, I can't, my computer died. And so what is the equity analysis around this? I mean, that is the philosophical question. What is the equity analysis around a belief that if the state isn't funding it, then it's outside the definition of basic education? We're encouraging everybody to get as many dollars from as many sources as they can and spend them. And we know, there is a whole conversation about how that leads to inequitable spending across our schools. So I'm not sure, my computer died because it's 10 o'clock, and I forgot my cord. But, I mean, there's a real philosophical question, and then to put a superintendent's policy behind it...
Away from your computer.
...that potentially will instruct or procedure to instruct on the collection and dissemination of such dollars. I mean, we're passing a policy amendment that is fraught with all sorts of questions that are swirling around currently that we are punting on. I just highlight that.
CFO Bergy, is this a compliance issue?
The law does say that the policy is to be passed before 1920. That includes those statements that we have incorporated into the policy.
Yeah. Oh, really. But stops here. What, are you suggesting amendment or not? Are we going to just...
I, no, because the amendment will, is that body of huge community engagement...
That we can't do in this timeframe?
That we can't do in this timeframe, but make it clear, we will have a policy that will instruct everybody out there doing the collection and the spending, that it is fine.
We already have that policy.
I know, and we get a lot of pushback on saying no to that. So when people come to us and ask us to approve it, they are doing that work under an allowable board policy. I'm just pointing out where we're at. Making it clear.
And the alternative to that is what? CFO Jolynn Bergy.
Don't do it and take a finding. Or worse, I'm not sure what else the auditor...
Don't do the work by 2020.
Yeah, you know, that's what the law says. The board could choose to do it or not to do it.
I see the deputy coming to the podium.
Good evening. Stephen Nielsen, Deputy Superintendent. I suggest that approval of this is a good tactical move, because it will help us say what we do to spend money, which could help us in our future issues working with the legislature.
I absolutely appreciate the candor of my colleagues. Number 13, Resolution 2018-19-31, fixing and adopting the 2019-20 budget. This came before ANF June 10 for...
Consideration.
Approval of this item would adopt Resolution 2018-19-31 to fix and adopt 2019-20-20 budget, the four-year budget plan summary, and the four-year enrollment projections. There is also an amendment. Would the maker of the amendment like to read that into the record, please, kind sir?
Amendment to the 2019-20-20 General Fund and Capital Fund budgets in support of the targeted universalism SMART goal to direct the superintendent to fund and reestablish a Native American Focus Option School that includes grades nine through 12, as promised by previous superintendents, and to fund and reopen the African-American Academy K-8. Approval of this item would reestablish a Native American Focus Option School that includes grades nine through 12 and reopen the African-American Academy K-8.
Take it away, CFO Bergy.
All right, well, before we get started, I just want to say that the budget book is online. I want to have a big shout out to all of my staff that spend hours and hours putting this book together. And Decebrin, our budget director, is here, so a shout out to her and staff. Yep. All right, so, are you clicking? All right. We have an agenda. I'm not going to go over it, I'm just going to hit the high points. I think some of these things that we have covered during our monthly budget work sessions and others, most of the data we have covered in monthly budget work sessions, I would say. So next slide. So this is the summary. Most of this data is in the book, right? So we're highlighting, we're taking highlights from this book that's very detailed, that contains individual school budgets as well. So we are looking at asking for approval of a budget that is just over $1 billion for, in our general fund, for the 1920 school year. Next slide. You can see, and these are slides that we've done every year that I've been here. This is my fourth budget with Seattle Public Schools, and these are slides that are similar that we've done... Right, I know, I'm refreshed. So this is our enrollment head count. This shows actual head count per OSPI's report compared to our budget. You can see where we have been off in some of our projections, and that we are budgeting to be down lower than the number of students that we currently have in 1819. Next slide, please. This number is just another way to demonstrate that. It shows the variances, it shows the growth over time of our budget, of our enrollment, and then it shows the budget to actual for numbers of students, and this is AAFTA. So remember that we're funded based on AAFTA, and we do count how many students attend based on head count. So there is some calculation differential as we get to middle school and high school, and those adjustments are because they're not always full-time students for us to count. This slide is again in the budget book. It outlines our general fund resources. You can see that we have listed the 1718 actual, the 1819 adopted, because we have not yet finished the year, and our recommended budget. We have had a significant increase in state funding and a decrease in local levy funding due to the change of funding MacLeary, that's the levy swap impact to our district. You can see, our federal dollars, we'll show a slide in just a minute, our federal dollars are really representing about 5% of our revenues. So I think there's some context there. Next slide. We have shown expenditures by state program next. Again, we have, we show expenditures three different ways. State program, regular instruction or basic education, special education, on down the list. And then we also show expenditures by activity and by object, which we'll go over in a moment. It's really three different ways to view down into information, the same information just from three different angles. You can see that regular instruction is growing in cost, mostly due to the recent bargain. Special education costs are growing as well. Again, increased costs for compensation are the biggest drivers of those amounts. Pupil transportation is the other one that I would note. We have looked and are expecting increased costs for pupil transportation as well.
Question when you go there, doesn't the state usually reimburse us the next year?
Usually, yes.
Have they not reimbursed us, say, in the last five years?
No, they have. For the most part, I would say that they have. How do we have a negative? Skill center revenue, skill center expenditures are expected to be slightly down from the prior year, from the prior budget. The percent of total expenditures is whether or not, it's the change in dollars, so we're expecting it to be down by $300,000, and then that's a 0.3% decrease from the budget, 1819 adopted budget to 1920 recommended budget. That's mostly due to expected enrollment.
Director Burke, did you have a question or a comment, sir?
I did just want to, you know, the vocational education and skill center lines, both of them, in 1718 actual and 1819 adopted, we had a growth trajectory on both of them. 1920 recommended, we've got a contraction back to kind of a midpoint. Is that because the adopted budget in 1819 was not fully consumed? Is that because the adopted budget in 1819 was not fully consumed? Or is that because we have had to scale something back? Or do we know why that is?
Yeah, I believe it's enrollment projection. It's enrollment projection, we projected too high for CTE for 1819. And we're, we're reevaluating our projection downward for enrollment for CTE as we are overall district enrollment. And that's the net impact on that small population.
And so the actual, okay, yeah, that's good, thank you.
Director DeWolf?
Can you just remind me what support services is again? Just what some of the categories are under that again?
Yes.
It's just like family support or homelessness students or?
I have in here, what is comp ed, other, and other instructional programs? But I don't have, other support services. Custodial and maintenance. Oh, right. So I think that that is custodial and maintenance costs for us and support services. We'll look really quickly.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, sorry, I should have turned to the back. The largest increase is technology and capital fund activities that are transferred to the general fund. Next is increasing costs for opening Lincoln and Magnolia, which is about $2 million. Utilities are up, support for the new SEB, the new medical costs are up, insurances up, things like that. So those are some of the things that are in there. And those are some of the changes that we've noted in support services. Sorry, it's late. Next slide. This is just the chart that shows the same thing. This chart is in your book. Next slide. These are activities. So we take those same programs, we're going to slice it a different way. So we're going to say, talk about teaching, teaching support principals office, those types of activities. Teaching, of course, has the largest percentage increase. That's related to the compensation increases. And those definitions are included on the next slide.
This may be a question I already should know the answer to, so I apologize in advance, but we're in the middle of bargaining. So this budget's based on what, in terms of dollars? Are we basing it on this year's package? Or an estimation of next year's package?
So it's what's been approved already. So what the collective bargaining agreement that we agreed to for the current year, those roll forward costs, those carry forward costs are in this budget as well as the state inflationary increase.
So existing year plus inflation. And that's it? In the budget, okay, thank you.
Next slide, please. This is the definitions for you, if you would like to read those. Next slide. Expenditures by state, I know. Expenditures by state object, same thing. It's just a way of saying, here's how much we have in salaries and benefits. We're a district that we run at about 85% or so our salaries and benefits. That's normal for a school district to run somewhere in the 80s for salaries and benefits. Supplies, purchase services, which are contracts, travel and capital outlay are very minimal compared to all of our other expenditures. Next slide. This is the chart that goes with that. Next slide. And then just another way to slice it, we wanted to talk a little bit about direct services that really go out to schools. And that includes both the weighted staffing standard formula and then the centrally-held budget that we do allocate out to schools. So we hold the budget for nurses as a central allocation, but then those resources are all pushed out to the schools as far as staffing goes. You can see that happens for nurses, instructional assistants, custodians, bus drivers, food service workers. All critically important to be able to offer those direct services to students. And then in support services, activities like payroll, the backend function of operating the district, payroll accounting, paying the bills, managing grants, HR. Next slide. There's a chart for us. Next slide. This is a requirement in law that we disclose to the board and that the board sees this as part of the budget. We look at, this is MSOC, so this is maintenance supplies and other operating costs. So those non-salary dollars that the state funds us, they have several categories. And then we show what we are spending in each of those categories that were budgeted to spend. Next slide, please. We have a similar slide put together for the Associated Student Body Fund. So you'll remember that the general fund encompasses the majority of our budget in our, for our district. But governmental accounting rules say that we have to have a separate fund. And state laws is we have to have a separate fund for Associated Student Body. This really begins and ends with the students. It's what they plan to spend, what they plan to fundraise for, and what they plan to approve at the school level. And then it is rolled up to the district level. Next slide, please. Debt Service Fund. We have a single payment running through the Debt Service Fund. That's our annual debt payment for the John Stanford Center bonds. Next slide, please. And the Capital Fund, we had a presentation at the last work session where we really went deep into the capital project budget. This is that summary that we had discussed during that last work session. Next slide, please. So next steps. We're submitting the budget to the Educational Service District, our ESD, for error checking. The board action is scheduled for July 10th. And we'll load the budget into our financial system. And then the approved budget is due to the ESD by September 3rd. Next slide. We've done two attachments for you. A district-wide staffing summary that shows by department how many units of what type we're hiring. I think it's very informational. It says how many teachers, how many librarians, how many central office folks. And then we've also provided a link to the school staffing allocations that are part of the book. That would conclude my remarks.
Can you flag something for the record, please? We had central district staff rift this year. And we are not backfilling those positions. How much, A, how many bodies? B, if you can estimate or guesstimate. And how much money do we have set aside? Because next year is going to suck as well.
So we had about, we have about $1.5 million in central office cuts that were not restored. It was about 15 positions probably or so, right in that ballpark. That was part of the exercise that the superintendent asked us to do once the board gave us direction on the amount. We did those cuts, we did not restore those cuts. That amount is sitting in escrow because we firmly believe that with the deficit that we're projecting for 2021 of about $58 million of a deficit, that we will need to offer those cuts up against, up again out of central. And to try to stabilize our operations, we decided as an executive team with the leadership of the superintendent to hold those funds in escrow.
Okay, and the question that I get out there on a regular basis is, that we funded McCleary and on the last day of the legislature, we raised your levy authority so that you were no longer, quote, "lawbreakers." How is it that we can still have a $59 million deficit?
Yeah. One, we were never lawbreakers. Asking for voter-approved authority is not breaking the law. Collecting one more dollar than you're approved for would be breaking the law. And we don't do that. The amount of funding that we needed was probably around $4,000 a student, not $3,000 a student to be able to not cut into the future. So the fact of the matter is that our expenditures continue to outpace our revenues. We do not have levy growth in the same way that we used to.
Just more of a comment. I don't, I don't want to take too much time, but I just, I know we've been able, we've been working on this budget for a year. And, and, and one thing I think you had, at least we had had a conversation about was that our process here is a lot deeper dive and more hands-on than many, if not any, other school districts. So I really appreciate you working with us throughout the years so that we can be thinking about the budget all year long. So I'm just really grateful for you bringing along in that process and all the hard work. And thank you for the incredible book. The artwork is fabulous.
That was their idea, that staff's idea, yeah. That's, that's our good staff artwork. I have the last one, too.
Sure. Well, it shouldn't come as a surprise to people. And I think when I first came on here, I was trying to, how can we get Indian Heritage High School back open? How did it close? It didn't seem like it closed properly. But it just seems like if we don't do something, we're just going to keep on pushing it down the road. When, when are we going to address past promises that were made to help our underserved population? This is not to disparage what the Hachusida program does. I want to make sure that that's loud and clear there. But because they have services and they're doing great. And then they have some focus services at attendance area schools. So this is one of the reasons on Indian Heritage, bringing it back, Native Focus High School, include grades nine through 12, I think will help bring our native graduations numbers a bit higher. They didn't have a fantastic graduation rate, but most of the students that they serve would have dropped out of school if they stayed in their other assignment schools. So that's one reason I think we're being able to save some students that would have been lost other ways through this school. And then also the African-American Academy to bring that back. One, to help support our initiative or focus on African-American males and how we can serve those students. You talked to me briefly on the phone that my numbers may be wrong. I got the number 1.5 million from a previous superintendent's his report on options on how to better serve the native student populations. And one thing included in there was reopening Indian Heritage High School, which he put a $1.5 million cost estimate on it. And I think you shared it probably more online with South Shore, which is about $2 million to get the school running. So for me, it's, I gotta bring the conversation back up because my time on the board is getting short. And I, I put it out there.
Director DeWolf?
Thanks, President Harris. You said the word surprise, Director Pinkham. And, and I honestly feel like this is the definition of a surprise. I, I want to be really thoughtful about our commitment to community engagement and having processes. And I will tell you, it is not the same experience, but particularly around the process for community workforce agreements. I, I couldn't have brought that here today and hoped to have moved forward on anything because it took, I mean, it took a long time sometimes just to get meetings with folks from the staff. So I want to be thoughtful that it does feel like a surprise. And it's not a surprise in the sense that we don't know your values and what you, what you want to fight for. I want to be really, really grateful and respect the work and the passion you have around that. My concern is that it does not go through a community engagement process. We haven't brought in the community around this. And, and we've had, like I said, a long, a year-long budget process. And I have, we could have brought this up at any of those moments, particularly if it's just 1.5 million. I think we've been really creative about cutting things. And we had a budget deficit this year. It just feels like this is a surprise. Not so much that we don't know that this is your passion, but to, to bring this forward today after, like I was just saying, we have a year-long process around the budget. And it feels really hard to have to say this back to you because I, I don't discount what you believe or the value or the efficacy of such a program. And I want to be thoughtful that people want us to make informed decisions. And this does feel like a surprise. And I want to make sure we include people in this process. If it is something we want to shoot for tomorrow, let's start a year-long process. So by next year, this vote isn't a surprise. And we've actually done something to make sure we've engaged the community and see if we can make it happen.
Yeah, and, and part of this isn't to start the school next year. To set aside funds to start the planning for it, the collaboration of the school. Maybe the, as I think of it, the 1.5 million isn't necessarily go to the school all school next year, but at least it'll be there for future years. And however the school gets created, our schools, I want to say. So hopefully this will help us set aside funds to do that collaboration, do that planning with the goal of reopening Indian Heritage High School and African-American Academy K through eight.
And, and if it is for planning, that's not what is outlined here. You've asked for two portables for a program. There's other things you're specifically about. And so if it's about planning, that's different. Because I also know we have some dollars from our levy, particularly for the downtown elementary school. Maybe we could use that. But I feel really in a corner because I'm a native person. And I grew up in, as an urban native. I, I likely would have really appreciated this. But if we do it, I want to do it right. And so if this is for planning, it's not how I'm reading that, it's for planning. But we can do that. And tomorrow, let's start that process so we can get there.
Thank you for that. And so, I know, and I definitely, I didn't mean to, I guess I can, I want to apologize for that, but I did bring this up. And if it is going to take, you know, some kind of, again, this is amendment, it's introduction, to get you guys' support, how can we then maybe see how this can change? Do I need to change it to more just planning to this amendment? So when it comes back to, when we vote on it, would that help out?
I personally do support option schools. And I think there are, that having specialized schools are useful in our district. And I do support the concept behind bringing back Indian narrative, Indian Heritage High School. And I potentially support the concept of the African-American Academy, though I'm not sure where. I haven't heard from the community at large on that issue as much. But from my personal perspective on the importance of schools that have specialized focus in our system, I'm very supportive. And I'm very supportive of, of these two potentially being schools that we could create. The challenge that I have with the amendment hitting now is that it's to the budget and it's not through the filter of the student assignment plan conversations. Where the space is, the planning process for figuring out where the space would be is really, really critical. I mean, we're still struggling with the challenge around putting a K8 in the middle of what was planned to be a middle school building. Not, you know, there's, there's the, there's the political challenges, but really the physical reality of having two schools co-housed in one space is a challenge. So putting, the idea of having portables and paying for the portables, that actually, the, the budget exists for that. We have in the capital budget, that's not a problem. The challenge in, in this proposal as it is, is that the planning that's required is multi-fold and crosses over some of our other policies and are not in that. So we'd be making a really dramatic decision to say yes to this that we haven't talked through all of the other policy implications. The other part of it is it being attached to the budget. The, the accuracy of even if we're just doing two portables for each of the programs, the cost required of putting a planning principle in place and all of that actually does, it's, it's not in here, too. And that's, so it's not an accurate reflection. So I can't exactly echo how Director DeWolf was talking about it. But for me, I want to be able to support this. And unfortunately, I can't because it's not connected to the other policies and processes that can actually make it happen. We haven't done the work to, to, to bring all that about. And at, at this stage in the budget, it just isn't, it's not, it's not, it's a half-baked plan.
Director Burke?
So I think I, I continue to really hugely respect the work that you bring, the perspective that you bring, the enthusiasm you bring. And what I'm torn about on this one is not being in a place where I feel like I can effectively make a decision. You know, these are not my communities. And so I have to look to these communities for guidance. And what I'm hearing in the work that we're doing is a desire to bring sort of the cultural richness of these communities to the district at large. And there's a, there's a, you know, the, the funding reality that we can't do everything. But what is the, you know, the programmatically creating? But what is the, you know, the programmatically creating, you know, identity safe spaces or focused schools around a specific, you know, in this case, Indian Heritage High School and African-American Academy? I think that the district benefits from sharing that wealth, that, you know, the culture. And I've heard from families that that's a positive thing. The other side of it is the safe spaces. And, you know, if we have communities that are, you know, in our comprehensive high schools, if our kids get lost in them. And I'm just, as a director, I don't feel like I could say, wow, let's invest money in these programs that are focused, potentially at the expense of those that we're developing that are, you know, maybe a smaller granularity or, you know, like the Sakashi program or, you know, the... I just struggle with how we can do both and what the community is asking for, communities are asking for with our limited budgets.
Last but not least, being board president really sucks sometimes because people assume you have a great deal of power. And I keep thinking, where did I put it? But I have to tell you, because I try very hard to be very clear, I am extraordinarily distressed that these two amendments, that these, it's the first time I've been told I have to use a microphone. These two amendments were pitched over the top, did not follow the committee structure, weren't vetted with your colleagues. And that's, frankly, that's kind of a breach of trust with your colleagues. Thank you for sending it to me so that I could immediately send it out to all of our colleagues. But now we've polarized the situation, right? You're against the Duwamish. You're against the Native American high school. You're against African-American Academy. Because that's how it works in this passive-aggressive city. And it frustrates me no end that we have worked so very well together, I think. Have we made the kind of progress that I dream of? Certainly not. This process drives me frustrated on a regular basis because it takes too long to get stuff done. But the numbers in here aren't vetted. We didn't send it to staff. It hasn't done its whole routing thing. What are the unintended consequences? And we haven't said where we're going to take the money from. And if we say it's for planning, okay? Then that's going to turn into yet another unfulfilled promise where we break trust with folks down the road. And I don't want to do that to the next board. I don't think that's nice, and I don't think it's fair. And we haven't said what we're going to cut out of these numbers here and with a $59 million budget deficit. So I guess I'm expressing my extreme disappointment. And I'm expressing even bigger my extreme disappointment that we don't have the luxury of expanding to meet needs. In fact, we know that small schools are more expensive to operate. We've seen those numbers. We argue about where on the spreadsheet, CFO, Bergy, where on the spreadsheet do we say, how much is a life saved worth? And we're not necessarily even doing a good job on what we're doing now. So I express my disappointment. And I hope that this conversation does not get polarized like so very many other issues that we deal with. $59 million budget deficit next year scares the heck out of me. The way that we are delivering some of our programs already is not sustainable. So to make even an inference of another promise that another board and our wallets can't cash? No, no, and no, respectfully. Moving on. Last item on the agenda, number 14. Amending Board Policy 6020: System of Funds and Accounts. This came before ANF June 10 for approval. Approval of this item, sorry about that, it was rolling. Of this item would make edits to Board Policy Number 6020: System of Funds and Accounts in order to meet new requirements in state law. These edits modify language describing the local revenue sub-fund to account for local enrichment levies separately from other basic education activities in the general fund in accordance with RCW Revised Code of Washington 28A.320.330. In addition, edits in the capital projects, debt service, and Associated Student Body funds were made to provide greater clarity in the use of those funds. CFO, Bergy, would you tee us off, please?
Yes, this is an exciting policy change that outlines our funds.
Does the board budget still have to absorb the cost of doing levies?
Yes. Yes. So this is, WADA came out with a new policy revising our use of funds. We have to include sub-fund language. And this policy incorporates those changes.
Comments, questions, concerns? This is strictly compliance, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Director Geary, did you have a comment, question, concern?
No, just making sure my microphone's off.
Okay, we are adjourned in this, hang on.
I think we had one comment.
Please. Acting Chief Counsel, Ronald Boye.
Just want to make clear for the record that on 13 on the agenda, the amendment did not receive a second. And I just want to make sure that's correct.
This is intro. This is not an action item.
Sherry.
Oh, you are so busted. Okay, we are moving in. We are moving into executive session to talk about anticipated litigation, et cetera. We believe that it should not last more than a half an hour. Should it do so, I will step out and give additional time. Thank you, thank you, thank you for everyone that has hung out here. You're a trooper. Thank you.